Good evening. Welcome to our candidates and to our audience. I'm Jan Edwards, and I'm the co-chair of the League of Women Voters of the Ancompagri Valley, and we are presenting this candidate forum hosted by the city of Montrose. So as a matter of courtesy, turn off your electronic devices. I'm good. The League of Women Voters is a trusted grassroots organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Participating in issue advocacy as well as voter education, the advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. The candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. Guidelines are also posted outside the room to include all of our attendees. Per those guidelines, campaign literature and other forms of campaigning, buttons, T-shirts, signs are not permitted inside the forum room to maintain neutrality. The candidates' literature is available on a table outside along with the League's materials. We are streaming and videotaping tonight's forum, and the session will be available on the city's YouTube channel by noon tomorrow, and additionally can be seen on the city's TV channel at 7:00 PM every evening until the election. But you can find the city's YouTube channel and the links on our website, which is www.lw-v-uv -- don't forget the dash -- dot org. Our nine candidates are running for positions in the Montrose County School Board, and they are Darren Safka in District A, District C is Scott Scarborough and Alice Murphy, District E, Chris Bessler, Tiffany Vincent and Holly Mundell, District G, Shane Daly and Jessica Corrigan. Each candidate has two minutes for opening and closing remarks. The speaking order is as they appear on the ballot and reversed at closing. Timekeepers will signal. Candidates with colored signs mark 30 seconds and stop. The first two questions are submitted by the League. As you arrived, greeters provided cards for submitted questions. Same questions -- screening of the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. The same questions must be addressed to all candidates, but any may pass. The order of response will alternate, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. There will be no rebuttals or crosstalk. Candidates are addressing you, the audience. Following the questions, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement in reverse order from the opening remarks. Our timers this evening are Betty Dickey, Becky Dickey, and Phoebe Benziger. You met our greeters already this evening. They were Kim Fangrood and Lindsay Wiley. Our reviewer is Holly Speaks. Our moderator is Susan Chandler-Reed, and we will begin with opening statements, please.
All right, welcome.
Welcome. My name is Susan Chandler-Reed, and we are going to begin on the left with Darren, and we'll continue around. And two minutes, please. Thank you.
Good evening. First off, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. And again, thanks to the other candidates up here for the time and the effort that they've put in for the campaign. My name is Darren Safka, running in District A. I've been in Montrose County, specifically in Olathe, for the last 32 years. My wife and I were hired in Olathe at the middle school in 1994, and I taught and was in admin for 30 years, mostly teaching, a couple of years as an assistant principal and a few years at the end as an athletic director. My wife is still currently teaching. She teaches ELL at the elementary school. We have two kids who went through Olathe Schools, graduated from Olathe High School, are currently working in the Montrose Delta areas, in their areas of study. So I'm a proud parent of my two children. I guess they're grown. They're for sure grown. But yeah, products of Olathe High School, and unfortunately, they had to have me for one of their teachers during their time, but they survived, so that's a good thing. The reason I tell you all of this is because I'm running because of the fact that I have been in education. I've seen all the hard work that the teachers put in, and I want to -- I always want to do what's best for our kids, so I'm working towards helping our district in whatever ways I can in order to make improvements where needed or continue doing the good work that's already going on and supporting our teachers and students in our communities and figuring out what's best. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us this evening, and really all of you for being here, listening to us as candidates, and just really doing your research and the people online. Thank you for listening. So my name's Nisha Balak, and I am a wife and a mom. I have a son that just graduated. He's 18, from Montrose High School. He's now CMU Montrose, starting business. And I have a 15-year-old daughter. She's a sophomore at the high school, and then I have a nine-year-old in private school. When I started this process again, because I ran two years ago, because I've been on the board for two years, serving as a Montrose County School Board leader, I wanted to just ask, you know, what kind of school board leader do we need? And to me, a strong school board leader is someone who is going to champion transparency, ask questions, really have hard conversations and challenging conversations with dignity and respect, listen and stay -- listen to all sides, listen to everyone, and just stay approachable and be open to questions and everyone in the community. And to me, it's also serving our most vulnerable and our most valuable asset, which is our children, and to look towards supporting their academic success. I have been a voice in the boardroom and outside the boardroom. I have supported increased parent communication with talking points, and now we're doing the Rocky Mountain Family engagements, which I've supported. I've supported parents who have been concerned about their kids being disciplined and getting tickets and getting ticketed. And I've also supported the teachers and listening to what they feel like they needed to be supported and their raises the last two years to be competitive in this area. I will continue to be a voice in and out of the boardroom, and I just ask that you would consider voting for me to serve for the next four years. It would be an honor to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nisha. Scott, please.
Thanks for coming out, listening to us. We hope we can impart some good information to you folks. Brief history about Scott Scarborough. We've been here in Montrose for about 37 years. We've done the math tonight coming in, so, yeah, 37 years, and I've been associated with schools in this area for about that long. I have four daughters, my wife Marilyn. Our four daughters all went through school here. I've been in business with my wife for 30-some years. Still can't hear. Is that any better? Yes, much better. I've been a member and was on the Region 10 revolving loan fund, been on the county planning commission. I've had a fair amount of activity and civic activities here in Montrose. Giving back to the communities is a big deal in my book because it's such a wonderful place. So that's one reason why I'm here, running for a school board position, is to give back to the community and hopefully help the community continue to grow. Again, we've been here for 37 years. 1988, I went to my first school board meeting with my daughters. They started school here and have been following it all through their schooling time. So anyway, that's who I am, and thanks for being here. Appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Scott. Alice?
Push. Okay. I'm Alice Murphy, and I am the incumbent running. I got elected in 2021, and I've been on the school board now for four years, so I have lots of experience. And people say, "Why are you going to do it again?" And I say, "'Cause I love it." Most of the time, I get out into the schools, and I love watching the kids learn, and it's just been a lot of fun, and so I'd like to continue that. Have a lot of connections with schools. They usually invite me in for their activities and their projects. That was fun to see yesterday with the Black Canyon. Another reason why I'm running is because I want to give back. Montrose County School District gave me 35 years of teaching at Olathe Elementary and loved it in Olathe. That's a great community to teach in. While I was there at Olathe, I was on the building leadership team. I was on the RTI team, which is the reading, Response to Intervention team, which helps kids that are having trouble in school, and we kind of talk about them and kind of come up with strategies and various things that we can do to help them, services that we can provide them. And I know it'll come up, our parents included with that, and yes, they are included in that process. I was on several textbook adoption -- oh, I have 30 seconds. I gotta go. I was a teacher, a trainer, where they sent me off to learn how to teach writing, six traits of writing and step up to writing, and then I came back and I taught the rest of the staff that. I love working with kids. I don't know. It just, that's where I want to be. I want to be in the schools, working with the kids, and I know I'm going to run out of time.
Thank you, Alice. You're up, Chris.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. I am suffering from laryngitis, so please bear with me. My name is Chris Bessler, and I'm a mom of four. I have a kindergartner, I have a second grader, a third grader, and a fifth grader this year all at Johnson Elementary. I never planned on being a stay-at-home mom. Actually, when our son was born, he was born with medical needs, that we had to make a family decision, my husband and I, and that required me to stay home. So prior to that, I was a full-time professional, where I spent 14 years teaching talent development to employees. I did corporate training. I have a bachelor's degree in communications, a bachelor's degree in political science, and a master's degree in diplomacy. When I became a stay-at-home mom, I said, "I can't sit still, and I need some adult interaction." So I actually was the very first president of the Children's Museum here in Montrose. I also joined PAC at Johnson Elementary School. I also have been in the classroom three to four days every week, whether it be ECC, the preschool, or Johnson. And I also am part of the Rocky Mountain Family Coalition. I like to keep busy. One of the most important things to me is not only stay active, but also ask the important questions. I like to make sure that we have open communication, clear transparency, and that we're all equal players in this district. That's very important to me. I want to make sure that our kids are getting what they need, that our teachers are being advocated for, and that our parents have a voice. It's so important. I also want to make sure that our community members are being educated and that they know what's going on. That's something that I value. So when it comes down to it, you'll hear a lot of us speak tonight, and I just want to thank you so much for taking the time out of your day and listening to what we have to say, because it's really important. So thank you so much, and thank you for putting up my voice.
Thank you. Tiffany, please.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. My name is Tiffany Vincent. I'm running for school board, not as a partisan figure, but I'm here tonight in front of you as a wife of nearly 18 years to a sweet, hard-working man, a mother of two boys, aged 14 and aged 6. I'm here as a teacher, as a neighbor, as a fellow human who cares about children like you all do. First and foremost, I'm somebody that believes every child deserves a quality education and that every parent also deserves a voice in that process, regardless of what their bank account looks like or what district they live in. I think we can all agree that strong schools is a foundation for a strong community. I'm running because I've seen how many parents sometimes feel out of -- left out of key decisions in their children's lives. I believe transparency, open communication, and collaboration is essential between the families and the schools and that relationship. When parents are involved, children do better. That's not ideology. That's research, and that's reality. I'm also focused on raising student achievement. Too many kids are falling behind in the areas of reading and math and just basic life skills. It's time we focus on these fundamentals and lose the political ideologies. You don't have to share my every belief to share my goals. I'm here to listen, to learn, and to work with anyone willing to work with me to make Montrose a better place for our kids. Let's focus on solutions for kids, families, and teachers, and overall for Montrose County. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Holly?
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and taking time out of your busy schedules to making them -- get the information so you can make an informed decision on the ballot this year. My name is Holly Mundell, and I am a wife and mother of two young men. My oldest one is 20, my youngest one is 15. My oldest was part of the first graduating class as a Red Hawk, and my youngest is a sophomore in high school and very active in different activities. We moved here 12 years ago. Since then, they've attended Johnson Centennial and now the high school. And each part of their journey through the elementary, middle school, and high school, I have helped them with their homework, so I know exactly what they're learning and what -- and how they're progressing and everything. My profession is dental hygiene. One of the reasons why I have stepped up into this race is, in my profession, I get to see teachers, I get to see parents, and I get to see children. And I have been an active listener in all of what they've been telling me over the past few years, and I wanted to put my hat into the ring and see what I can do as far as being a community member and helping make things better for everybody, whether it be the teachers, the parents, or the students. I do come to you with board experience. I have been a director and alternate director of the Western Slope of the Colorado Dental Hygienist Association. I am a voice for the Western Slope and the Front Range. Those that are on the board know that I will always speak up for the Western Slope as far as access to care and everything. So I also come to you with no agenda. I come here to collaborate, to listen, and be an active member and treat others with respect.
Thank you, Holly. Shane, please.
Hello, my name is Shane Daly. I'm running for District G. If you've seen my name, Daly, you probably thought it was pronounced "Dally." It's actually pronounced "Daly." My grandma said we couldn't afford another vowel, for I or E. You know, I'm running for school board because I got an email about that joke saying I should say that I couldn't afford another consonant to actually make it "Dally." So I've been in the area for about 30 years. We moved here when I was young enough that I don't remember moving here, so however long ago that was. I have five kids, ages from 11 months to 20 years old. The oldest three, we adopted through foster care, and the younger two are biological. A lot of times when I tell people I have five kids, they say, "Man, it sounds like you got your hands full." I say, "Nope, just one handful, just five." As an adult, I've had a lot of really cool opportunities as a wildlife leader, which is like middle school, young life, if you're familiar with that. I've got to coach, I help out with Sunday School, we've done foster care, my wife and I. And so kids mean a lot to me, and I think that's needless to say. I think that they're our most powerful resource, and that they're worth investing in. I see a lot of really cool things happening in our district, and it's encouraging. I'm becoming more and more optimistic every day about the future of our district, and I would like to be a part of it. I think that I have skills as an entrepreneur, an employer, and a father, that I could offer some quality and my perspective to the board and to this community. Again, my name is Shane Daly. I'm running for District G. I talk, guys, I promise. And tonight, I hope that I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. And finally, we have Jessica.
Good evening, and thank you for being here, and thank you for hosting us. I'm Jessica Corrigan, and I'm running for the seat in District G. I'm running for the board because I just believe really deeply in the power of public education. It's one of the biggest investments we can make in our children. I am a first-generation college graduate and a lifelong learner, and I have my educators and my public schools that I grew up in to thank for that. I am committed to demanding transparency and accountability and communication while supporting our teachers, staff, parents, all the people we need to make it work for our kids. As a mental health therapist, I recognize the importance of education early on. I got a bachelor's degree in psychology from Purdue University and my master's in social work from Indiana University, but I knew in graduate school that I wanted to work in school-based mental health. And so 14 years ago, my husband, Patrick, and I moved here so I could become the therapist at the Northside Child Health Center. Since that time, my relationship with the school district has grown, just as my own two children have. My boys have been in the district since they were preschoolers, and I started out on the Policy Council at ECC, Early Childhood Center. I am in my third year on the District Accountability Committee. I'm active on the PAC, the version of the PTA, and I'm in my third year of substitute teaching. So our district is far from failing, and we have a lot of really incredible things happening currently, and I know there are lots of opportunities for growth and change as well. I'm glad we're discussing some of these issues tonight. Please ask questions, and if you don't get the answers you're looking for, please feel free to chat with me afterward or send me an email. Again, thank you for your time.
We are now going to move to the question portion, and you'll each have a minute and a half, and you'll all be answering the same question. And so, Nisha, we are going to begin with you. And the question is, "In your opinion, what are the two greatest concerns the district will face over the next four years, and how will you address them?"
So what I've been seeing on the board, the discussions, thank you. What I've been seeing on the board and just the discussions that we've been having about decreased enrollment, that concerns me. And then the other thing, too, in the next four years is just making sure our kids are getting a quality education and that our teachers are supported so that they can get the education that they deserve and need. And so with the decrease in enrollment that we've been seeing, I really believe that we have an opportunity to really open up and listen to our community and the teachers and ask, "What's contributing to this? Why do you think this is happening?" And just looking at different facets and making sure that we're not missing anything as far as what the teachers need to support, the students, making sure that the community really feels engaged, the parents feel engaged. We are doing some things to help with that, which I'm excited that the talking points should be helping with that because it does direct communication and it engages the Hispanic community. And so there are studies that show that increased engagement with parents and students and teachers actually increase academics. So I'm excited to see that progress and just continue to be open to hearing what are the concerns, why people are leaving. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, what do you believe the two greatest concerns the district will face?
I wish there were only two, but let's choose them, choose them wisely. I would have to put academic excellence as probably number one, because without that, everything kind of ain't working. So academics, go back to traditional core values in the education system. Incredibly important to do, have to do that, because if these kids don't get educated right, game's over. The second thing is stick with traditional values and not the new, whatever you want to call it, values. But please don't go down that road. And my job, if I get elected, is going to be the watchdog to keep it out of public schools, because there's no place for it in public schools. So those are the two things that I feel strongly about. There's other -- there's a whole basket of other stuff we need to work on, but those two are the -- thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Alice, what do you believe the two greatest concerns the district will face?
Okay. Well, academics is always at the top of the list, because that's our business, is we want kids to succeed in school. And so we do have a strategic plan right now that involves the Marzano strategies and the proficiency skills, and that will continue, but we are going into another phase where we're coming up with a new strategic plan for the direction that we want to go with our academics and how to improve that. Second, I would say enrollment is going down, which means we're -- and the finance that goes with that, the budget cuts that we're getting, we noticed that in the spring when we didn't get the head start -- the early childhood funding, and we had to consolidate schools and kind of shuffle around staff. And so with those budget cuts, we have to look at, how can we keep staff and how can we keep the teaching, teaching strategies and stuff going on? So we really try to make sure that staff is number one. We want to keep that, but we also want to keep our learning going on, too. So I think there's going to be budget cuts along the way, and that's one of the concerns, so.
Thank you, Alice. Chris?
Yes, and I believe that -- oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Thank you. I believe the two things that we need to look at is really need to have a serious conversation. I compare it with Alice said with the decline of the teacher profession, absolutely. But with that also comes, we need to have a conversation about the poverty in our district and really focus on what that is doing, and not only with the poverty, but also we need to look at the, yes, the teachers coming in, but if we don't even have adequate housing to bring these teachers or to house these teachers, then that is, that all comes together. So we need to have some serious conversations and really focus on the -- when it comes to the bigger plan is -- sorry, I apologize with my voice. Not only does it come to the poverty issue in our district, but also feeding our children. This is a big issue, and we need to, when we need, when we sit down and have these conversations. And then we also have to look at the technology, too. We're going to introduce our technology with our kids and say that we have to have -- we don't even have kids that can afford to eat. So how can we afford children? How can we give our kids and mandate that they have iPads, or they have computers, or they have technology? Like, we need to really have some serious conversations. That was a struggle. Sorry.
Thank you. So Tiffany?
Okay. First of all, I think making sure parents have a voice at the table, whether that be through the Talking Points app or whatever it is, but making sure every teacher knows how to utilize that tool properly. Because I do have one teacher at my 14-year-old school who's using it phenomenally. I know what books they're doing, what they're writing, what -- but not every teacher is doing it as effectively as the one teacher. So I feel like if all of the teachers could use it as effectively as she's doing, we would be in a great place. Involved parents equates to increased performance. And that leads me to what would be my second point, which is increased performance, whether that be through looking at class size or paraprofessionals, but definitely making sure teachers are well taken care of. And just knowing that student achievement should be the guiding light of every single decision a school board makes. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Holly?
So in my opinion, two of the greatest concerns for me would be chronic absenteeism. If we can find a way to get the kids into school, if they are at school on a regular basis, then that will help with academics, because if they're missing school, they're missing out on their academics. Second, it would be replacing the teachers are going to be retiring in the next four years. Finding a way to Finding a way to, and I'll echo Chris, the housing situation and bringing in teachers and quality teachers as well, too. So those would be my two greatest concerns as far as that goes. I think both of those go hand in hand with trying to improve the academics of our kids and help them with their well-being.
Thank you. Shane?
As I've been on this campaign, I've taken the opportunity to talk to a lot of teachers and a lot of parents. And with teachers, it's a consistent statement of issue that it comes back to parent involvement, whether it's chronic absenteeism or whether it's kids literally falling asleep at school because they're up all night playing on their iPad. And that goes back to the parent, and the teacher can't do anything about that. And that's affecting grades, that's affecting focus, and that's affecting the rest of the class because that's taking focus away from the teacher being able to engage properly. And on parent's side, I continually hear it comes back to trust. They don't feel heard by the schools, and they don't feel valued by the schools. And so those two things are just in conflict with each other, and we need to find a way around that. We need to address those. And every parent that I've talked to is genuinely invested in their kids' lives as they should be. And every teacher that I've talked to is genuinely invested in their students' lives as they should be. And so where is the breakdown? We need to identify that and address it.
Thank you, Jessica.
So I think our biggest concern in the next four years is probably family engagement. And I say that because I think that's the umbrella over most of the things that the rest of us have already said. When we are communicating well and when we're clear with parents and they can reinforce what their students are working on and learning at school, it keeps parents accountable, but it also helps them keep the district accountable. And I think families are really looking for that. I also think, as Chris said, we need to do a needs assessment on every student. And I remember doing that when my kids started at ECC. They asked me 100 questions. But I don't know that that's an ongoing process. If families don't have transportation, if they're hungry, if they're homeless, all of those things are going to impact attendance and achievement. So I think that we need to be looking at that as an overall thing. I also think that the district has some really serious fiscal things that are going to just keep coming up. They're not new, but they're coming up all the time. We need to continue to pay teachers and paraprofessionals a fair living wage. Teachers need to have ongoing, robust professional development, and that's a really expensive thing to pay for. And also, we have a district full of aging buildings, and we spend lots of money propping those up. And eventually, that, we're going to run out of time on that, and we're going to have some tough decisions. So I have that in mind as well.
Thank you. We're going to begin our second question with Scott Scarborough. And that question is... Excuse me? No, we're coming this way.
I didn't... I haven't had an opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am sorry, of course.
And I don't usually speak out like that, but I figured I might as well.
I'm glad you did.
And maybe I don't because there's been eight answers already, and I'm sure I'm not that different from the eight that have already answered. But nonetheless, I think one of the concerns is always going to be student achievement. And I think that that comes down to continuing to evaluate our programs in our schools, figuring out what's working, if we need to make improvements, continue to do that. And tweaks, whatever we need to do to continue to raise our student achievement and looking at all kinds of different measures. We don't want to look at just one thing as our reason to say we are not achieving or we are achieving. We have lots of things that go on, and maybe the public and the community need to be more aware of. The second thing, and I don't know if this is cheating, but it's teachers because they're our main resource that are reaching our kids, but hiring, retaining, and whatever support we can give them, I think that is dire. I've been in that role of needing to hire teachers and coaches and whatnot and have seen the challenges that we face when you're looking at the candidates or the pool that we might be able to get from. And we just need to continue to work at that, and that's a challenge no matter what. And it's something that we face, and I think a lot of districts face, but we need to work hard to hire and retain quality teachers and give them the support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, my apologies. All right, now we'll start with Scott. And the second question is, "How will you respond when contentious issues are raised by students, teachers, parents, and/or the community?"
What is your definition of contentious issues?
I think that you can define that for us as you wish to answer it.
Well, if it's anything other than reading, writing, and arithmetic, then we shouldn't have it. It shouldn't even be in the schools. This is the thing we have to look at, folks, is there are so many influences coming into the children now from outside sources. And it's not influence to make them better students. It's influence to make them different people or whatever you want to call it. There's no place for that in the school, none whatsoever. So how would I address that? I wouldn't address it because it wouldn't be in the schools if I had any say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice, how would you address contentious issues?
Contentious issues. I would say the main thing you need to do is listen to people. I really try to do that most. There, to every story, there are two points of view, and both of the people that are in that are really passionate about their beliefs and their ideas. And so you do have to do a lot of listening. I do a lot of note-taking. I look into data. I research things. And then taking in all that information, I try to come up with a compromise that maybe would work for all of them or the best... Well, it comes down to making a decision that is best for kids. What is going to be best for kids? And so you do a lot of listening when you're on the board. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Alice, Chris?
I'm actually going to do what I hope you guys are going to do with me tonight. Meet me where I'm at. Notice that I'm running on about 50% of my normal self. So that's exactly what I would do. I would meet every person where they're at. And what I mean by that is you really have to, yes, you have to listen. Yes, you have to give them a safe space. Yes, you have to really show them that you care and really bring people together. But you have to go where they're at. If they're having issues in their school, let's say they're a teacher, go in their classroom, be where they are, listen to them. If they're having problems with their building, go in the building, walk the building. Go and be present. If they're a parent, don't just pick up the phone. Actually, go to their home, their safe space. Go where they are. If they are an actual, like, if you're in the school board, if you're a school board member, go out in the community, have coffee chats. Go and meet where they are so that you can hear them. You don't want to just say, "I'm listening to you" or "I hear you." Actually, meet them where they're at and show them that. Be present. Be on where they are. Meet them where they're at.
Thank you. Tiffany?
I'm the type of person who does like to listen to every voice. I don't feel like anybody deserves to be dismissed outright for any point of view. I would feel terrible if somebody did that to me, and I always like to put myself in somebody else's shoes. However, on the flip side of that, not every single thing can be fixed immediately. And you can't make empty promises to people. So it is worth hearing them out, researching, talking to other board members, seeing what you can do about it, if there is anything to do about it. But overall, making sure you get back to that person and say, "I listened to you. We talked at the board." Or, "Please come to the board meeting," or anything along those lines to bring up your issue that you have. I just don't, I would never outright dismiss anybody's issues that they have because they feel passionate, just like I would, about the things I feel passionate about. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, please?
So my approach would be with honesty and care. My values are rooted in a biblical worldview. What that means is, is I take into consideration each issue and how it's going to impact individuals, educators, students, parents. I want to prioritize active listening whenever I approach any of those things, engaging respectfully because there's going to be a lot of different perspectives. And overall, there's no one-size-fits-all to any issue that, a contentious issue, as it may be called. So in doing that, since there's not a one-size-fits-all, it's gathering those insights, looking at both sides, three sides, four sides, five sides, whatever it is, gathering that information and bringing it to the table. And, but I don't want to have somebody give up some of their beliefs as well, too. So with those challenges, if they're affected, I want that to be known. Ultimately, my goal is to support decisions that uphold everyone's personal beliefs while strengthening the educational outcomes of students.
Thank you. Shane, how would you deal with contentious issues?
Thank you. Alice said that there's two sides to every story. My wife would say that there's three sides, his side, her side, and the truth. Not trying to be contentious or anything. I'm just, I thought that was kind of funny. Contentious issues need to be handled with respect, and all parties need to be heard and to feel heard. They need to know that you are listening and that you are taking action on the issues at hand. And like I said, it needs to be handled with respect. Every issue is different, and we need to meet people where they are, as previously said. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
There's not a lot I can say. That hasn't already been said. I think we all agree on this pretty closely. But number one is really just listening. And as a professional listener, I can tell you the impact that that has on someone. If you sit down and look them in the eye and let them know that you really genuinely are processing what they're saying to you, that's a big deal. You know, having compassion for folks. They wouldn't bring it to our attention if they didn't care as much as we all care about students and children. I think, I like what Alice said about gathering as much information as possible. I think that's always going to be really important. And the board cannot and should not fix everything. There are certain things that are within the scope of a board member's service and things that aren't. And I think, as Tiffany said, being really honest with people upfront about what you can and can't do about a problem is another way to just respect folks.
Thank you. And Darren?
Well, I agree with what Jessica said, is you're going to hear the same thing again, and that's okay. Basically, five steps. You've got to listen first, as we've heard. Gather all the information that's needed for the issue and all sides. Collaborate with the necessary people, school board, teachers, principals, students, whomever it might be. We need to make, after we've gathered all that and had those discussions, make informed decisions after we've gathered our information and then figure out, and what we're doing is what is best for kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, Nisha?
So I've been a nurse for 20 years. I've worked with professionals, and I've been a professional for over 20 years. And when I take care of people, I take care of them like they're my loved one. And so that's how I would handle each person's situation, and that's how I've been handling. Every person that's brought me concerns in the district, I've handled them like they're my loved one. I listen to them with dignity and respect. I treat them well. I follow up with their concerns. The biggest thing that I'm seeing in our district right now is that people do have things that they're concerned about, and they feel like they go to the teacher, they go to the principal, they go to the superintendent, and then they have three minutes in the boardroom to share their concern, but it doesn't go further. So what I'd like to do as a full board is to examine that process and find out, you know, if we need to develop a process where they can come to the board with their concern if they still have a grievance past the superintendent and that they're heard and not just three minutes in front of everyone. So that's one thing that I'd like to look at. I do believe that you need to acknowledge people's feelings when they're going through something. I think the follow-up is key and talking to them and not being afraid of the hard conversations and not being afraid to say, you know, "I have to look into that. I'm not sure." Because we all have our knowledge that we bring to the table, our strengths, our weaknesses, and sometimes we need other people to support to find the answer for anything that is concerning teachers, parents, students, our community. Thank you.
Thank you. For this round, we are going to start with Alice, and it's a two-part question. "Do you feel that our school district withholds important information from parents? If yes, give an example. If no, describe how parents are welcome to obtain information on their own children. What is the process?"
And how they obtain information?
Yes.
Okay.
On their own children.
Okay. I'm on, okay. Do you think they withhold information? Well, they have the Talking Points. They're starting that communication of family engagement communication thing with them. So that's an effort to try to talk to parents. I think teachers, I mean, I used to call kids when they were parents, when things were a problem and/or write a note or... So I think the communication is there, and they're not withholding that information. And then the second part was to... How do you...
"If you do not believe that the district is withholding information, describe how parents are welcome to obtain information on their own children. What is the process?"
Obtaining information. I think you can report cards. There's something online that you can go to. Obtaining information. Well, ask the teacher. I would call the teacher. I would call the school and get information that way. I know if they're having difficulties in school, that response to intervention team would bring those things up, and you'd be going over those strategies with them. And I... Withholding information, I just think they're pretty upfront. Teachers are pretty upfront. Schools are pretty upfront, and they're giving that information. And you should be able to talk to people and get that information, so.
Thank you, Alice. Chris, would you like me to read the whole question again? It's complicated.
Can you speak again?
Oh, I'm sorry. "Do you feel that our school district withholds important information from parents? And if you do believe that, could you give an example? If you don't believe that, describe how parents are welcome to obtain information on their own children and the process for doing so."
Sorry. I don't believe that this is always the case. I don't believe that this is always, this is not their intention. However, I do not, I believe that my stance is that we do need to work on consistency throughout as far as clear communication and transparency. I have an example where in the recent board meeting of our CMAS scores, only three schools were communicated to us parents or to the public. This was an issue. Was it ill-intent? No, it wasn't. I believe, because I believe, because I went to the expert who gave the presentation, and she confirmed with me that this was not malicious, that this was something that she wanted to celebrate. She wanted to call out that the scores were positive and that the three schools had improved. That's great. But as a parent of a school that was not listed, I want the good, the bad, and the ugly. I want to be told so that I can be part of the solution. I want to know because I want, I have a huge stake in my child's education, and I want to be a part of that conversation. And I want to be a part of that conversation. So I'm not saying that it's ill intent at all, but I think a better approach would be bring me to the table as a parent and allow me to have full, complete transparency so that I can be a part of the solution. Does that answer the question?
Certainly does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I didn't mean to come out so aggressive. I just can't hear.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Okay. So there are instances, yes, where I feel like there is information being withheld. And part of it's due to Colorado state laws that have been passed regarding preferred names and pronouns. And if a child wishes to have these things kept from a parent, a teacher can just decide, I don't need to tell them, or they'll find out in some other ways that there's things coming home with a different name on it, or there will be clues, but it's hard to pick up on those immediately. So if your child's going through a mental health crisis and needs help, a parent might not even know about it because a teacher would be withholding the information. And regardless of whether that's state law or not, to withhold that information, I think Montrose County should be resistant to it. There's other specific instances where I've talked to individuals where they said, oh, I found out from my kid that they were watching CNN or certain things in class that are would be, I think, controversial. But, you know, not everybody does. I think that those types of things should be passed through parents or told in advance. Like I was speaking of my, the one teacher we have right now who's very, very good at communicating and giving a syllabus and a weekly schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly?
This is kind of a hard question for me to answer, mainly because I'm an involved parent. When the question came up of what schools are not, what schools information, holding information, for me, the first thing that came to my mind was when my children were in elementary school. And I went to every single parent-teacher conference, and I heard the same thing every single time. Your child is progressing, and that's what we want to see. They're not at grade level, but they're progressing. And so that's okay. And so that kind of gave me a false sense of security whenever they got into middle school. And or actually, it was COVID that kind of opened up my eyes to, for me to know, yeah, my kids are progressing, but they are definitely not at grade level. So I think as far as that goes, I really wish as far as starting in elementary schools, teachers, educators would be more open to say, your child is not at grade level. What can we do to help you get your child at grade level? As far as obtaining information about your child, like I said, again, that's a hard one for me to answer because I've been involved. So I encourage all parents to get involved. Sit down and talk to your kids at dinnertime, check in with them, check in with their mental health as well.
Thank you, Shane. Same question.
When my oldest daughter was in middle school, she got in a, what was called a fight, but she was assaulted by another student in the hallway at school. And we went to get her because we got called in. And for weeks, my daughter had been talking to us about this one student and talking to teachers about this one student saying, hey, she's making threats. She's being aggressive. I'm trying to avoid her. And it was always swept under the rug until finally this girl assaulted her in the hallway between classes. And my daughter got suspended. And when I asked why my daughter got suspended, they just said, well, I'm sure that she instigated it. They wouldn't show me any video evidence. They wouldn't, they had the security evidence. They wouldn't tell me who the other student was. They said she got suspended, too. And they said that my daughter should have ran away, and that's why she's getting suspended is because she, this other girl was punching her in the face and holding her by the hair, and she didn't run away. So unfortunately, the transparency doesn't seem like it's there. And as parents, you can't help but feel like you're in the dark a lot of times. And how are you supposed to approach that? So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jessica.
So I, this is a hard question. It's a pretty loaded question, like Chris said. Does the district withhold info? The, one of the things I hear parents ask a lot of questions about is that law that Tiffany referenced. There is a state law that allows children 14 years old and older to obtain counseling services without the consent of a parent. I can tell you as someone who's done this for 18 years, that the number of times that a student has done that without wanting to consult a family member, I can count on one hand. And in those five cases, there's been a real good reason that they didn't want family involved. So ultimately, that's, that's a consideration. And respecting state law is important for the board to consider because legal trouble is not something that we want to spend money on. But as far as how to obtain information from the district, as Holly said, this, I don't have a hard time with this as a parent. My son's school does a really great job. They have a newsletter. All the teachers put out a newsletter every week. I think uniformly applying that across the district may be helping teachers figure out, where can I fit in five or 10 minutes more planning time to be able to make a list of the media and the literature we're covering? Seems like that would be a great idea. But I would also just start with the teacher, and then the principal, and then central office, and just continue up the chain. But I've said for a long time, we need some visuals for parents to explain how to utilize the district, and this is one of those cases. It'd be helpful.
Thank you. Darren?
So do I feel that the district withholds information? And I would say, no, I do not believe that that's the case. If it happens, I don't believe it's intentionally done in any way, shape, or form. But that, that means that communication is something I believe any organization or every organization can always work on to improve and make better ways that we can get words out to parents, to community members. You know, you're all here. There had to be something that that got out that we can do. And unfortunately, there's probably not a, you know, snap the finger, magic wand type of fix. And it's something that needs to be continued to be refined and worked on. As far as gathering information on their children, I, I agree with what's been said. I feel it's a two-way street. I know teachers have tons of work. I know schools have tons of work. And parents, when they're involved, I don't feel like, I feel like they are getting the information that they need and need to continue to do that. So, yeah, contact teachers and schools and principals. And I believe they'll get the information if they're not. And hopefully, you know, that communication gap is, is not as big. Thank you.
Thank you. Nisha?
Perception is reality. And there is a lot that we can do for communication in our district. And some of the things that I've been hearing, I mentioned it at a forum the other night, but there were families in Alata that were concerned about an outside organization presenting them a Shakespearean play, The Twelfth Night. And it, their perception was that it conflicted with their beliefs. And so I'm still investigating that. But it's that conversation and being open to say, let's talk about this. And I have heard frequently outside organizations, sometimes they're concerned about what's being brought in. So I think it'd be an opportunity for the whole board to look at. Maybe we should have some policies around like that kind of information, that curriculum coming from the outside organizations to present even social emotional wellness. Be very transparent for parents to see, maybe even a parent night before that is ever presented. I also have experienced with parents feeling like they're dismissed for their concerns. I had parents who were concerned that their kids were being ticketed for self-defense. They said that they were self, they were doing self-defense. I saw the videos and I agreed, but then other people in the district didn't agree with that. And so there's a lot of concerns just around people not being heard and things not being thoroughly looked at by the board. And so I want to continue as a board to just listen and be honest. And also the board needs to define data that they want to look at, in reference to Chris, data that they define and look at.
Thank you. And Scott?
Well, before this, I didn't think there was not a problem with getting information to parents, but apparently there is, Shane. Thank you for bringing that up. And thank you for bringing up the fact that there's a state law in books. If you're over 14, school doesn't have to tell the parents. That's got to go, people. There, we are not counselors. We are teachers. We're here to teach the kids how to read, how to write, the classical style of education. We are not counselors. If they want to have a counselor, then hire specific people who are counselors to deal with this, but keep it out of the everyday thing. The school should always, always, always tell the parent what's going on. There is no excuse for that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. And this is something completely different for us. Can you describe the two ballot measures in November 2025 that provide nutrition funding for students? That would be ballot issues LL and MM. And we'll start with Chris.
This is going to happen a lot. Okay. I cannot right now. And I have been very transparent and open in the conversations that I've had with the community members and teachers and parents. I don't have all the answers. I don't, and I, but there's one thing that I do best and not ask questions. And I go to the experts that I, that have presented themselves. So as experts, because I think that's important. And much like we do in our, in communication, basic communication, is that you get people together and you put people, for instance, this roundtable in front of me, you put the school board, you put the teachers, you put parents, and you put, you put community members all together. And they come together to make decisions, and they come together to have conversations. So that being said, I cannot describe those at this moment. And I didn't feel like I wanted to pass because I just want to let you know and be honest with you and clearly transparent that I don't have those answers.
Thank you. So can you describe the two ballot measures, LL and MM, that are state, on the state ballot?
I, too, am in the same boat. Have not read my lovely little blue book that has come in the mail yet because I haven't had my, usually I open my blue book alongside my ballot and read the ballot along with the measure, pro and con on each one. However, I do know that every measure on the ballot was involved increases on tax for some reason with the libraries. There's a recall measure, and then there's school board measures. That's all I know about the ballot. I haven't read the blue book yet, though. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Holly?
Actually, I have skimmed over it. So, so what I understand with LL is the taxpayer bill of rights from the state in order for them to keep in excess for this particular program, which is the school meals. Right now, all schools get free meals, regardless, free and reduced lunch, regardless if they're outside of that free and reduced lunch. So right now, I think it's 12,000 or 12 million. I can't remember. I had a 12 in the front of it. So LL says it's okay to use that excess, if I'm not mistaken. Again, I briefly read over the pros and cons on that. MM is to keep that measure in place of taxing those combined individuals or state tax to keep taxing them for funding that particular program for their free school lunches for the state of Colorado. I can't tell you whether I'm a for or against, but that is what I understand of those two ballot measures.
Thank you, Shane.
I do not feel that I am well enough educated on this topic to make a comment. Holly did a great job, I think. I will go ahead and pass. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jessica.
My only understanding of either measure is that they have something to do with free lunches for all and how those will be funded and continued or not continued. But that is the extent of my knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
No, I can't help you out on that as well. Need to do my homework, and I'll just say that something comes up like this, I'm willing to do my homework. So I, I would have to read more about it, or read about it, I should say. Thank you.
Nisha?
So I keep looking at that blue book as I run in and out of my house to forums. So it's going to be read soon. But I did hear some conversation recently just about that and concerns that people had been brought, bringing up. But in our, in our district right now, where that money, from what I understand, wouldn't affect the food that our kids are getting from the federal funding. And so then there's the other concerns that people have around just Tabor in general and being careful with the Tabor monies because a lot of people that have expressed to me, just making sure that those Tabor monies or the Tabor isn't taken away. So I have to research, but I will do my due diligence as a citizen and do that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
We'll probably look at it before November, but I have no idea what that's about.
Alice?
Okay. You're hoping I say I have looked at it because I gave a presentation on this on Saturday. LL and MM do deal with the school lunch for all programs, and Tabor is attached to that. That's why it's on the ballot, because they're looking for using that taxes. And it would be people that are 300,000 and above would be the ones that would be paying a tax. And I think it was either 300 or 400 that they were going to get, have taxed. They had to, also with this bill, they have to do the local food. They get their, from our producers that are around the area. They would use that food in that area. Lots of things to this. Oh, and if this does not pass, it would affect, it wouldn't affect the lower income rural type schools. And I think Montrose will not be much affected if it does, if it does not pass. Yeah.
Thank you.
I should know more because I did study that.
And I'm going to interject with a plug for the League of Women Voters. We will be having forums on the ballot issues to help you get educated. And then there's also the, and there's materials on the table and also available on the State League website, ballot issues and why.
Right.
Why?
411, is that the site, the vote?
Well, just, just League of Women Voters Colorado has the ballot issues pamphlet electronically. All right. Tiffany, we're going to start with you. Could you tell us your views on cell phones in schools?
Yes, absolutely. I think, I mean, everybody has a cellphone. And my son takes one to school. My 14-year-old, not my six-year-old, to be clear. I have got, my six-year-old does not have a cellphone. My 14-year-old takes his, he texts me, I'm here, or I look at Find My Friends to make sure he is there. But he is expected to keep that in his locker all day, regardless of whether that was school policy or not. That is mom's policy. He needs to keep it in his locker. But overall, I think it should be school policy that it should be kept in a backpack or locker for the entirety of the day, include, and I also think smartwatches same, for the same reason. They're just a distraction. Right now, Montrose County schools is 90% of our schools below the state average in math, 70% below the state average in reading. I think we need to get out all the distractions we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, your views on cell phones?
So with this day and age, with school shootings and everything, I am for putting the cell phones into the classrooms, mainly if something were to happen in the classrooms as far as school shootings or any, anything like that. Those children have, will have an access to talk to their parents and, or actually call 911. One thing that I would like to see, my oldest one, he has recognized how much time that he spends on his. that he spends on his phone and how much time that he has spent on social media. What he has bought for himself is what's called the brick. And what, and you have to have an app for it, but you just touch your phone to this square little thing and it shuts off all your social media apps. If that's something that the schools would be interested in, or at least one teacher, so that way those social media apps would not be a distraction inside the schools. And, or, you know, if that is not readily available, keeping it into a backpack or right now they have the shoe caddy to make sure that they are not distracted inside the classrooms or using it, but, but they have their iPads to use for their classroom homework and, and also everything like that, so.
All right, thank you. Shane?
Yeah, I, I have been encouraged to hear about the implementation of the, the caddy, the phone caddy, shoe caddy. I'm not sure if it's schools-wide, that all schools are doing it, or if it's just some, but it, it sounds like a lot of classrooms at least are implementing that. And that's encouraging because I know with my daughter, her cellphone was a massive distraction when she was in school. And there was less restriction on it at that time. You know, it, it takes time and duration and dedication to, for kids to learn. They have to be committed to what they're learning and they have to be focused. And so having a cellphone is just a massive distraction that they don't actually need during their class period. So I'm a fan of the shoe caddy idea where they can have it nearby if they're expecting an important phone call from, you know, their lawyer or whoever kids need to get in touch with. But that it's not in their hand and is, is an act of distraction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
As everyone else has said, cell phones are a massive, frankly annoying distraction at school. We know that screen time, excessive screen time is a reality for a lot of our students and it is a big problem. We know that social media usage is bad for all of us. It is. Okay, I like cute puppy videos too, but only so much of that is gonna work. I will say that anecdotally, my, my children's school, they attend Outer Range. And so Outer Range has elementary students, middle school students and high school students. The middle schoolers voluntarily adopted a no-phone policy and they love it. They live great without their phones. They know that if there is an emergency, they know how to, to call home, whether it's in the office, on the landline phone, or they get their cellphone from the secretary. But that's easy to do in a smaller school, so I understand those limitations. I'll also say anecdotally, subbing at Columbine Middle School where the students have iPads and sometimes laptops and also cell phones, the amount of learning that happened in that class for those two days was shockingly little. I was really concerned after I left there. So I think the district is looking at a district-wide cellphone policy and I think that's a great idea. Exactly what that looks like, I think at a minimum, students do not need cell phones on their bodies all day long.
Thank you, Tiffany. Darren?
I agree with what everybody else has said. It's a huge distraction. I was in the classroom and students and their cellphone, I think they're like connected to them. I think it's a distraction for all of us, to be honest. We might all need a policy at some point. But nonetheless, yeah, absolute distraction, takes away from the learning that, and the achievement that we're looking for in our classes and in our schools. And I don't know, I, I know from what I've heard from some teachers that they, there's policies in place. And I, again, I don't know if it's school policy or district policy, but I, I'm a, I'm also a fan of the shoe caddy. If they have them, bringing them into the classroom, they can put them away. They don't need them during class. You know, the five minutes if they're going from class to class and they wanted to check their, what do they check? Snapchat? I don't even know anymore. I can't keep up with them. But nonetheless, it, it doesn't need to be in the classroom and it's something that, that we need to work to police and, and work on, for sure.
So actually, next Tuesday, we are voting on the second reading of the cellphone policy. So if you have any thoughts on that, you can go on and look at that and give us input. But currently, each school leaders have developed basically their own policy for the cell phones. And a lot of teachers have given input that it is a distraction. We all know it's a distraction. And there are shoe caddies at a lot of the schools. Is it uniform? No, it's not uniform everywhere, but definitely we're recognizing how much of a distraction it is in the classroom. And we know that it decreases kids' attention spans and so to minimize that is helpful. And then also, it minimizes anxiety for the kids not to have their phone and to teach them that it's okay to have a break and to have boundaries. So I think it's great that we're doing more of that in our schools and I expect to continue to see that. Thank you.
Scott?
Absolutely. A great policy, no cell phones, especially in classes, but even throughout the day at school. Fantastic. Totally for it.
Thank you. Alice?
Probably ditto with Nisha. We had our first reading of the policy last month and then on Tuesday, we'll be deciding on a policy. And what that is, is they can only use it in certain times like before or after class. During class, it needs to be put up, either in a backpack or in a shoe caddy. The one thing that bothers me are the iPods. Is it, I would like to include that in there because how does a kid listen while they're hooked up to the iPod? So anyway, that, that's my opinion. And the watch, you gotta get rid of the watch too, because you're really distracted with that. So I know Grand Junction has a policy and the superintendent there talked about how it improved their academics when you have those cell phones put away during the day. So I think it will help in school if we put them away. So that's all I have to say about it.
All right. And then finally, Chris?
Oddly enough, I was over at Montrose High School on Friday and I was at Electra's class and all the kids walked in and they dropped their cell phones in the caddy, no big deal. And I asked, "Is this an issue?" And they said, "No, we, we love it. It's not a big problem at all. Allows us to focus and really engage with our classmates." The one thing that I've done some research on is if there was a school emergency, having a ding or a ring from a telephone actually makes you a target in a lot of cases. Another concern would be if parents are calling in or students are using their cellphone to call, they're not listening to what their teacher's saying or they're not listening to the loudspeaker where it's giving emergency direction. So it can be a big distraction in a severe safety issue. So that's something to consider. Also, the, with the AirPods is in that caddy, they, they'll, they'll drop the AirPods in there too. And Electra's teacher said that the biggest issue that she has is that the students constantly swipe her chargers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we have time for one more question and we'll start with Holly. Do you feel security is adequate in our school district or is more needed? And if so, what more is needed?
Well, I know that whenever they had the bomb threat, I think it was a couple of years ago, my son was in either junior or senior year, I think it was junior year, so a couple of years ago, four years ago. The response time was really great. They had, they had their procedures. They'd been doing drills and they were prepared for that. The response from the sheriff's department, from the Montrose Police Department, they did, they did their job of what they were supposed to do. And like I said, the response time was really well. Now, as far as security, from what I understand is that in the morning time, there's one way in, one way out as far as the high school. And I'm not familiar with the security at the elementary schools or anything like that because my children are not in elementary or middle school. But they are continuing to do drills, continuing to do things to make sure that the kids are adequate in those response times whenever something does happen.
Thank you, Shane. What, what do you feel about the adequacy of security in the district?
Yeah, I, I remember that, that bomb threat as well. It was quite a eventful day. The cell phones, I mean, man, it was like a live feed of information from kids texting out. So it's just kind of an interesting thing. It was taken very seriously, the public meetings and everything that, that were held and the turnout for that and the protocol that was, that was implemented as far as the entrance and exits in the morning. I think that the, the police department, the faculty is doing a, a great job and taking it very seriously. I'm sure as previously discussed or mentioned by Jessica, at some point, we probably will need to address a new school. And, and if when that happens, I'm sure that different security measures would be implemented. But we also don't want our kids to feel like they're in a prison, having to go to school or that they're being punished with, with certain protocols with, you know, clear backpacks or anything like that. So I do think that the district is doing a, a pretty good job, taking it seriously.
Thank you. Jessica?
I would agree that the district does a pretty good job, I think. You know, elementary schools, the doors are locked, you have to ring the buzzer, even a district office now. And it wasn't like that when I moved here. You have to ring the doorbell, you know, someone says, "Who are you here to see?" So I think that that is great that we have that at a lot of our buildings. The safety teams, I know that the last person I spoke to whose child unfortunately was threatened by another classmate, the school resource office, the principal was on it. The school resource officer was on campus within 30 minutes and they had that child's parents at the school within two hours. And that was more on the parents that were working and so on. So I think the system is pretty responsive. I know that there are, there are other things that could be added. Ultimately, I think no matter what you do, someone is probably gonna be able to outsmart it. That makes me sad to say, but I think that's the reality. And so being really careful about looking at best practices, what works, what doesn't with regards to school safety and then just making really sensible fiscal decisions about not investing a bunch of money in something that maybe isn't going to make much of a difference anyway.
Thank you, Jessica. Darren?
Yes, I do believe that the security is adequate. I know that there have been some big improvements over the last several years. Safety's always a concern and it, and it should be. Our children are, are the most important resource out there, so we need to take care of all of that. And of course, our teachers and staff as well. I know schools do different training to be prepared for different types of situations. There's drills involved monthly. I know the admin, or at least a few years ago, admin did, worked on different scenarios to, to help work on, you know, different kinds of problems that might arise. So they were quick to respond. And, and we need a good balance as well. We want our schools to be a welcome place, but we also want safety. So we, we, we have to find that balance that's necessary. Thank you.
So I'm really thankful we have the school resource officers at our schools and I really appreciate the partnership we have with law enforcement. It's very strong and the law enforcement does a great job with practicing lockdowns and if there's threats, I don't think Mr. Pavlich was here, but he's gone. But he has done a great job of, of working with law enforcement and working with the schools. So in general, I believe that there's been a lot of changes and a positive direction just to secure the doors and to have just one opening in the morning times and to have badges and that whole system. And it's taken a lot, taken a lot of infrastructure, but Mr. Pavlich has done a good job. One concern that was brought up just recently, actually, a substitute had told me they did a lockdown, but there was no debriefing afterwards and checking on her. And she's a substitute and I've heard that can be pretty stressful in a lockdown situation, you know, in practicing. So I think we could do some improvement as far as like debriefing before and after a lockdown just because that gives practice and it helps just to recognize if there are any pitfalls. And that's, the teachers are the ones on the ground, so they're gonna be able to see those and see if something was missed. I mean, she said something was missed, so it would have been good to have that debrief.
Scott, please.
Well, we have, we have to recognize the fact that the crazies are still gonna keep coming at the schools. They're not gonna quit. We're gonna see more and more of this as society gets larger. I don't know what the, the protocol is for this, the security scenario at the schools, but right offhand, I would say let's double it. Why take a chance? And also, let's look at private security versus the, the police or the county sheriff. This is a huge, huge deal, guys. We, we do not want to be interviewed on the five o'clock news, standing in front of the school, trying to explain why somebody got in there and killed kids. So please, help us on this.
Thank you. Alice?
Actually, security at our schools has really improved over the years since I retired. I know I have to do the little buzzer when I go to all of the schools and they see who I am and then they're, it's actually a vestibule, I guess, where they have a double door there that you have to get through and they'll let you in that way. So I, and, and my comment to the secretary is I always feel like I'm very secure when you're coming into here because you're checking me. And, and so I feel like with those entrances, one entrance that they come through has improved there. We do, I do wanna do a shout out. Jim Pavlich was here and he's been phenomenal. The safety team that we have here at Montrose School is like nationwide, one of the best in the nation. He's done really good work. He has that military experience too. I think he was in Afghanistan. And so he brings that to the table when he does that. Working with the law enforcement, if you've ever been to the police department, they have the, that room you go into and you see all the cameras. Well, it's hooked up to the Montrose School so they can see if things happen there. So they do work together with the law enforcement, sheriff's office, police department and good response time. We usually get a call from the superintendent if there is something that happens and I appreciate that, then we know what happens.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I actually am extremely proud of the safety that this district offers. Every morning, I drop off the biggest assets in my entire life and that's my four children. And I can't tell you how proud I am to open those doors and get, they are greeted by at least six teachers. It is incredibly reassuring. I've been a part of 10 lockdowns in eight years, whether it be the preschool or whether it be the elementary school. And it's just practice, but I can tell you it's flawless. And I am so confident in knowing that our teachers have these kids in the palm of their hands and they protect them and they guide them. And my kids aren't scared. I was an emotional wreck, but they were happy and they were confident and they knew what they needed to do. And that's because of our teachers and that's because of the work that they've done and I'm proud of them. What's also great is that they take them to the field trips to go see the sheriff's department and the firehouse so that they recognize who these public officials are so that they're not scared at a very early age. And to me, that's very important because when these, when you are in these safety positions or when you are in these severe positions, they need to know that these are their friends and that they need to know that these are people who are gonna help them and get them out of these uncomforting situations when parents aren't there to hold their hand or guide them.
Thank you. Tiffany?
So I've been into a few of these schools and I can tell you that the buzzing in system and the double doors, they're, they do feel very secure. So coming into the school, at least the front doors, I've not gone over obviously and checked all side doors and back doors and entrances, but I would assume and hope that they are all locked and secured in the same fashion and that people aren't propping them open in order to get easy access back in. But of course, I wouldn't know that. I'm not the teachers that work in that school. However, I do work at Pope John Paul Second Academy and they have tried to implement some of Montrose County School District's safety policies. And that just goes to show that the Montrose County does have some adequate And that just goes to show that the Montrose County does have some adequate protocols, including their lockdowns, their fire drills, their SROs. The other day, there was a fire alarm over at Centennial Middle School, and it just happened to be a false flag from the shop class. But everything went off great. They text all the parents, which I think is important and key in the communication. I like that they text out that there was a fire drill or something happened. But always, we should be one step ahead and thinking, how can we be better? There's always something we can improve. Nothing's perfect and infallible. So that's where I'll leave that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the question portion of this forum. I want to thank you all for being respectful of the time and of each other. We will now have our closing remarks, and we're going to do it in reverse order. So we will start with Jessica and move to the left. Thank you. Two minutes each.
As we have discussed this evening, we know there are a lot of issues that face our district. In addition to some of the other things that we talked about, if I am elected to the board, we'll keep the focus on what really makes the difference to student achievement. I would focus on, again, that communication piece, making sure that from the board and superintendent, all the way down, and from children, students and families, up every level of that chain, that communication is transparent and that it is improved from what it is. I would also like to see the district look at how uniformly curriculum is being implemented. I understand that that is a two-edged sword. I think that's something we could consider looking at. Again, I think we need to look at the needs of every single student in our district to make sure that their basic needs are met to improve their achievement. And I think we need more boots on the ground in classrooms, more paraprofessionals, instructional assistants, et cetera, and they need to be paid well enough to stay. I could tell you all night about how my professional experience has given me all sorts of gifts. Listening, collaborating, creativity, confronting tough feedback and really tough discussions, problem solving under pressure. But I think the biggest benefit to electing me is that I'm passionate about education and I'm passionate about this district, and I'm very engaged in our school district. I will keep complete focus on students and what's best for them. Without my personal beliefs or my politics getting in the way of that. I look forward to working as a member of a team. The board is a group project, and I love group projects. I look forward to making evidence-based, fiscally responsible decisions that will set our students up for no matter what they choose to do in the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Shane?
Studies suggest that 100% of kids who grow up become adults. So I believe in educating for today and equipping for tomorrow. We can't just focus on what's directly in front of our face. We have to look at the big picture and take all sides into account. I believe that we should all come together as a community to come around our kids and to give them the best education and the best opportunities possible. Excuse me. I believe in an academics-focused approach, focusing on our kids and what they're learning. If we are focused on our kids and their education, I believe that everything else will fall into place. We're going to want the best teachers and the best for our teachers and the best resources for our teachers. We're going to want the best parent involvement, and we're going to want to have all of the best resources for our students as well. So keeping it simple and keeping it focused and deliberate, I believe, is important. Again, my name is Shane Daly, not Dally, and tonight, I hope that I have earned your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, please.
Yes, thank you very much for showing up tonight. A minute and a half is not a lot of time for us to adequately get all of the information that we want to tell you out there. I am available afterwards if you want to ask me further questions. I believe that, you know, as far as a good candidate for me is understanding that, you know, if elected, I'm one out of seven people, and each of us have different personalities, and working with the different personalities is something that I am willing to take on. Lost my train of thought, sorry. No pressure. So I believe that as a just a school board, all in all, it's not a one-size-fits-all for any of the issues that may come up, and we have to look at them. Each individual school, look at what their needs are, because what one school needs is not what another school needs, and we have to look at the overall picture and gather that information and be able to make that sound decision whenever, as a school board member. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you. My name is Holly Mundell. I'm running for District D, 103 here. My name's at the bottom. Don't forget about me.
Thank you, Holly. Your final remarks, please, Tiffany.
As we wrap up, I want to leave you with this. I'm truly not here to push an agenda. I'm here to build a bridge. We live in a time where politics divides us at every turn. And when it comes to our children, though, and their futures, we have a lot more in common than we even think. For instance, every parent I've ever met, including myself, wants the same things for their kids: a successful environment, a supportive environment, and a safe environment. Every teacher I've ever met, including myself, wants to be empowered to be an effective teacher. And every student deserves an opportunity to reach their full potential. I believe in the importance of parental rights, but not as a way to hinder teachers, as a way to help them, because parent involvement, as we know, helps student achievement. And I believe in accountability, but not as a punishment, rather as a path to progress. I believe student achievement should be the north star that guides every decision a school board makes. If you elect me, I commit to listening to all voices, respecting families, and working with anyone willing to work with me to strengthen our schools. We owe it to the next generation to do better than what our numbers suggest right now. Thank you for your time, your trust, and your willingness to listen. My name is Tiffany Vincent. I hope I earned your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, please.
Thank you again for coming tonight. Two years ago, I realized that Sheriff Fisherling, District E, was being termed out. She had served our district, and so there was an opportunity to come in and serve. And I had somebody ask me if I was willing to take on this journey. And I thought about it. It took a lot of time to sit back, talk to my husband, realize what a commitment it would take. And quite frankly, it wasn't a hard decision. It was yes, absolutely. And so I took on a grassroots approach. I don't have Facebook. I have one website. You can check it out. And really, it's about connecting with people and talking with them face to face, because that's what I expect to be heard. I expect to be listened to, and that's what I want to do. I want, that's what I do when I go in with the teachers. I really, and that's what I do when I'm with the kids, and that's what I do when I sit down. I had meetings with all the board members. I asked them about the job. I asked them what they did and how they felt about the district. I met with the district leaders. I met with the teachers. I met with community members. I have done nothing but the research. I've asked the questions, and that's what I will continuously do. You know, I've told my running partners here, it has to be a working relationship, because whether or not I get on this seat, it doesn't matter, I'm not going anywhere. My babies are, like I said, kindergarten to fifth grade, and I'm here for life. And so we all have to work together, no matter what. And that's what it takes. It's a working relationship. So politics has to stay out of this. It can't be contentious. It's about our children, because ultimately, they are the next generation. They are what matters. And when I think about it, I want us to all have a voice. I want us to all be heard, and I want us to all matter. And so when I ask you tonight to just listen and to really make a decision that matters, thank you.
Thank you. Alice, please.
Okay. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum tonight. You are about educating people about the ballot issues. You're nonpartisan. I appreciate that from you, and so I do appreciate you putting on this forum. I have to say, I joined them because when I first walked in, it was a mix of various people that live in the community, and they all want the same thing, is to educate the people. And so that's why I like that group. I appreciate the people that came to the forum tonight. That shows that you want to be educated, and so I'm going to leave you with a few things to get yourself educated about this election. If you go to the website for the school district, mcsg.org, you will find bios on all of the candidates that are here. They have written about themselves, so that would be good to check out. Another good resource would be to go to Vote411, which is the League of Women Voters' site. And that will, there were five questions that we had to answer, and they were all, they all dealt with education issues. And so that would be a really good resource for you to go to, so you can see more about the candidates that are here. I do want to say thank you to all of these people that have stepped up and run for school board. It's not easy. This part is the, I tell them it's the worst part, talking to people. But it takes a lot for you guys to step up and do that, so I appreciate everybody that's done that. And it gives the people a choice in this election, so thank you for that. I'm Alice Murphy, and I do want to be elected to be on the school board again for another four years, and I hope I've earned your vote.
Thank you. Scott, please.
Yeah, thanks, folks, for coming out. And in reality, the board works for you. I mean, you can come to us, come to the board, to do things, to say things, to get things moving. And there's a lot of things moving in this upcoming election. I think teamwork, we need to focus tremendous, tremendous bit of effort on teamwork, keeping everybody apprised of what's going on. Make sure that the board is providing and protecting the children at school. We have academic excellence we need to strive for, all of us. Parental rights, huge issue. And I want you, when you go home tonight, think about these things that we're thinking about and we've been asked questions about, that you see happening. And put all that together to see how it'll fit into making this a better school district. There's nothing wrong with that. Keep our traditional values. Don't let them slip away. Don't let them be compromised by outside forces, so to speak, that would deteriorate the traditional values of schooling. Again, we're working for you. Door is always open. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for your time. Scott Scarborough, District C?
Mm-hmm. That's us.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Nisha, your final remarks.
What if we all tie? I'd be willing to work with any of you. This is a hard thing to do forums and answer questions, so good job, everyone. So my name is Nisha Balak, and I'm in District A. And I've been saying this, but really what happens to these kids happens to all of us. It is so important in our community to be focused on our most vulnerable, our greatest asset, the students, the kids. And I have to tell you, I've lived here six years now. We moved from the Eastern slope, but both my husband and I grew up in Craig, Colorado. And this community is amazing, and I just love Montrose. And our school district is amazing, and it's been wonderful to serve the last two years. It's had its challenges, but that's okay, and that's what I look forward to. I look forward to challenges. I look forward to having hard conversations and being a voice in the boardroom, being a voice outside the boardroom. I'm going to consistently treat people with dignity and respect and listen and just do everything that I can to make sure that we in the boardroom are focused on the right issues, so that we can increase the academics of our students, so that they're learning, so that we focus on our teachers and that the teachers feel supported. And I'm going to continue listening to the teachers and getting input from them, and then seeing how we can implement what they're suggesting, because I know what it's like to work on the front lines and feel disconnected from administration, and I want to just close that gap. So I definitely want you to know that I am here to work for the next four years for our community, for our students, for all of you, and I would really appreciate your vote. If you have questions for me, and I'm willing to share my number, and we can meet for coffee. But please, let's work together to give our kids a solid foundation. Please vote for Nisha Balak, District A. Thank you.
Thank you. And Darren, last words.
Okay, I'm not going to say it. I know what you guys are thinking. We've had an ongoing joke with other forums. But nonetheless, first off, thank you all for being here. The fact that you're here means that you care, which is why I'm up here as well. I care about our kids. As a proud educator in Olathe for 30 years, you know, I believe that every kid deserves a high-quality, safe, supportive education. I think that's super important, and I think that together, and it doesn't take, it's not one person, it's everybody, together, we can strengthen our schools and our district and do what we can. I'll tell you straight up, I don't have all the answers. But I will tell you, I'm willing to work hard and figure out what those answers or whatever the issues might be, work together with the rest of the school board and the community, and work for what is best for our students and our staff and our community. Again, I'm Darren Safka, District A. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, my turn again. So the League of Women Voters thanks the candidates, but we cannot lose with these guys, right? Thank you for running and for your participation this evening, and thank you, the audience, for meeting the candidates, asking thoughtful questions and listening to thoughtful answers. Please visit the League's website at www.lw-v-u-v, or you'll end up in the umpqua valley.org. For the links to the recording of this forum and to other information about the upcoming election, complete information on elections nationwide is available, as Alice said, at vote411.org. And there and on the table is a lot of information about the ballot issues this year, and links to lots more. These folks will be answering questions, more questions from the League, and you can also see their responses side by side on Vote411. Members of the League of Women Voters are volunteers doing hands-on work to empower voters and to defend our democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. Visit our website at, you could probably tell me if I asked you, www.lw-v-u-v.org. I think I've told you that enough times. Visit it also on Facebook and follow us on Instagram. And here's a reminder, the deadline to register to receive a mailed ballot for the November 4th, 2025 election is October 26th. Change or update any of your information, register online at the Secretary of State's website, govotcolorado.org, or the League's vote411.org. Remember to register to vote by mail at least a week before the election, or register up to and including Election Day. The very best citizens. Also encourage family, friends, and neighbors to vote. So thank you and have a good evening.